I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to call it a regular, um, meeting for the Brian VNU. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, on a nation, God, and equal liberty and justice for all. Well, again, everyone, we'd like to welcome all of our guests and visitors, those who are here and those who are also tuning in via Brian VNU. Now, let's begin this meeting with the roll call. Rob?
Emily.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Ryan Miller.
Here.
Glenn Newcomer.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, first item on the agenda is improved inside of a very meeting. On the review of directions to as they have been submitted, there are no changes. Our additions are correct. Is there a recording that? Moved by Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ryan.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, I do not know of any public participation at this time. Therefore, we move on to.
Thanks. Good evening. I know you're plugging right along very well. Construction is underway in the old offices next month and today is August, ready for the next school year. But in the meeting, as it discussed last week on our meeting, um, it looks just like a big dance hall, just all open. So, working on that. Um, some club news. I have not heard the final results. I have requested. I don't know if our, um, principals have heard, but pretty excited that in the FFA program, we had, um, in the animal management team, Ame Gilbert and Kennedy Nickeling. Am I saying the names right? From Brian, who place, took second place in animal management competition for FFA. Um, that has happened and they would have moved on. I'm not sure if there's, um, a new update. I'm sorry, um, to those ladies that I don't know the results yet. Also, in HOSA, there have been state competitions that were held and pretty exciting that we had Carly Boylan, Sarah Snively, Brooke Valmer, Keisha Gonzalez, Kristen Sealy, and Trey Lloyd that, um, all competed. So, um, if you run into any of those students, please congratulate them for going to the state level. And again, I apologize for not knowing more results, but, um, hopefully we'll hear very soon. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Sandra. Questions for? If not, we will leave the treasuries report.
Thank you. We'll start with our financial reports from the month ended February 28, 2015. Our cash reconciliation report to Farmers and Merchants State Bank. The district maintained funds of $5,352,706. Our outstanding checks and adjustments totaled $352,020. Investments at Star Ohio totaled $7,228,630. At Morgan Stanley, $38,737,525. Petty cash and change funds totaled $7,700. Total funds on hand at the end of February were $50,974,542. Of those funds, uh, the general fund balance was $10,788,616. Our permanent improvement fund balance was $1,871,889. Our building fund, a locally funded initiative, uh, fund was $3,346,711. Our capital project fund, local share, $34,044,798. And, uh, project fund, state share, uh, balance was $101,190. Once again, total fund balances $50,974,541. Our SM2 report where we, uh, preview our budget versus actual, our revenues, this report indicates we had excess revenues of $2,174,000. Uh, $2 million of that was real estate tax advances from February and January. So, I did, I didn't budget, I budgeted all the real estate tax money to come in in March. So, that's why the reason, uh, the $2 million. Our actual excess is $174,577 on the revenue side. Our expenses, we are $644,744 under budget. So, our actual at this point in time were $819,000 to the good, uh, as compared to budget. Any questions regarding those financial records and reports?
When you say the actual over budget, did that's comparing what you had budgeted in March for us receiving the tax?
Correct.
On the tax piece of?
I put a revenue for the first half tax collection in the month of March.
Yeah.
We received a million dollar advance in January and another million in February.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yes.
Thanks, Rob.
Mm-hmm. Um, we'll look at amended appropriations next. Our appropriations total at the end of February was $31,615,610. Appropriation changes during the month of February, um, food service, an addition of $650. District managed activities, our athletic fund, we increased that by $1,003. Orchestra fund and vocal funds each had additions of $10,000. Under grants, an increase to auxiliary service funds of $13,403. Our permanent improvement fund, an increase of $1,848. And OHSWA tournament fund, an increase of $1,281 for a total of $38,985. Next item is a contract with Northwest Ohio ESC for services for the upcoming fiscal year. It's in the E. We ask for approval on that item for this coming year based upon current services. They've estimated our cost for next year will be $249,367. And that, that's estimates, uh, for next year based upon current enrollment, current services for various students. We ask the board, uh, for permission to establish a Fund 200-967R. That will be for the class of 2021 when I'm getting old. We'd like to acknowledge a donation from Tim Hortons for $50 for donations that they supplied for our elementary art program. And that concludes my report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Are there any questions for Rob? If not, is there a motion supporting the treasurer's reports and recommendations for the month? Moved by Tom. Is there a second?
One second.
Seconded by Sandra.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Thank you, Rob. In our own business, we have two different items that we want to discuss. Do you have a preference, Diana?
Um, actually, we'll hold off on the OFCC update until, we do have a, an action item this month, so we'll combine those two.
Okay.
So, I'd like to start with a review of where we are with our random student drug testing, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I shared with the board, um, as you remember, sometime before Christmas holiday, we started discussing the possibility of a random student drug testing program. And again, it's just investigative at this point. We did put together a community committee, including parents, coaches from school, students from the school, um, business leaders, and myself and some of the other administrations sat in to just discuss in general some of those questions that the board had asked be investigated before they look into approving such type of program. So, what I'd like to do is kind of go through and highlight some of those questions and answers for you, and then we'll open it up for questions, additional questions that the board may have. What you see in front of you is a draft policy. This is not finalized. There are still a few areas that you're going to see highlighted where the attorney has some questions. Um, unfortunately, prior to tonight's meeting, the attorney and I were unable to get together to get those clarified. So, that will happen over the next month and we'll bring back the actual policy for the board to have a first reading. If we choose to proceed, you'll have a first reading, a second reading, and then after the second reading is when we would vote. So, again, as some highlights, um, why are we doing this? One of the reasons, or there are many reasons we discussed as a committee, but we really have concern of what's going on in this community right now. If you read the headlines related to the drug problems, the drug arrests, there, there is a definite difference in our culture today, in our climate today, in what these are exposed to. So, we wanted to try to give some students some healthy choices and some reasons, additional reasons to just say no. Some additional ways or means that they can use when they're confronted with this as an option. In discussing, and we list the goals on that front page, we want to provide a healthy and safe environment for all students. We want to discourage students from using drugs and alcohol. We want to provide students with the opportunity to become leaders for a drug-free school. We want to provide solutions and appropriate interventions for students who may make a mistake or fall into a bad situation. Uh, we want to encourage those students to remain drug and alcohol free. So, again, the reasons why we felt there is a need at this time, um, to pursue looking into this policy. Who would we test? That was one of the original board questions, and the committee felt that it was important to test all of our student athletes, as well as any of our students who are involved in extracurricular activities such as National Honor Society, the art club, FCCLA, uh, the Fall Play, the Spring Musical, anything that can be deemed extracurricular. They felt it was important to go, um, through seven through 12, grade seven through 12, because they think that some of these behaviors are starting in middle school years. We wanted to give an option to students who are not involved in any of those activities for their parents to opt them into the program. So, in other words, if you're a student that may hold down an after-school job or may participate in other activities outside of school, um, we wanted to give parents an option to allow those students to be tested as well, if the parents so choose. And again, the, the big key is we have to have parent and student buy-in. So, at the end of the packet, there is a consent form. Students must sign off, parents must sign off, in order for the student to participate. If they choose not to sign off, then they're choosing not to participate in any of our school activities. What would we test for? You're going to see a list of definitions of different, um, terms that could be used throughout the program, but really it comes down to a board decision. And we know that that also comes down to a financial decision. There is a cost to testing. The more you test for, in other words, the more screens you want run, the more expensive it gets. So, the board is going to have to have some input into what do we test for, how often do we test, and what percentage of our student random group do we test? I've run some preliminary numbers, budgeting approximately $20,000, which would allow us to test 20% of our student pool two times a month, so bimonthly. One thing we discussed our last committee meeting is that we don't necessarily want to inform or be completely, uh, locked in to only testing for certain drugs, because the usage could change, something new could come in. We want to give some flexibility to the board. But the committee was pretty adamant about testing for tobacco usage. That is one option with the tests. Alcohol was, was talked about, but the problem with alcohol testing is alcohol is not going to remain in your system, like some of the other drugs or the tobacco usage will show. Again, we talked about the student code of conduct. It was recommended by our attorneys that we now, instead of just having an athletic code of conduct, we have one form that's for everyone to sign. And the committee would like me to look into whether or not that can be signed at the beginning of their seventh grade year and go on. I have a feeling the attorney is going to want us to sign it annually, just to make sure the parents and the students understand that they are committing to this program again. The collection process is outlined as well. Um, it's a very detailed process that's handled by typically whatever company we would choose to contract with. So, the next step in the process would be to advertise or request for proposals from different companies. And again, if the board chooses to proceed, that would be a step we would have to approve a company to work with. Student privacy issues are addressed. As the only person that's in the actual testing area is the company medical officer. And student identification is addressed in the policy. Students have to have a photo ID in order to test, or they can be verified by our school administration. Results, if a positive test were to occur, are shared immediately with the students and the parents. And the parents do have, again, our committee wanted to have an appeal process put in. So, you'll see in this draft policy, an appeal process. If the parent feels that there was a false positive, then they can, A, ask to have the sample tested by a second lab, which the company typically does. B, because we're so close, they could take the student over for a blood test at the medical group. Or C, if they could produce, let's say a student tested positive for a prescription medication, if they could produce that prescription and it was valid and it was current, then that would be part of the appeals process as well. The consequences for the policy, we wanted to make them consistent with our current athletic code of conduct policies. So, a first violation, and I'm going to talk in two forms. So, first, we're going to talk athletically. If a student athlete were to test positive and they appeal, or there was no appeal, then on the first violation, that student would be, um, kept out of contests for 40% of their current season. If they're at the end of the season, it rolls over into the next sport that they participate in. So, if you use football for an example, that would be four games, because football players play 10 games. If it's a basketball season and it's 20 games, that would be eight, correct, Mr. Arnold? Help me out with my math. Thank you. Um, baseball and softball would be approximately the 20. It varies by the type of sport you're in, that percentage, but it was important, that's what we have currently, to keep that percentage. If the student on a first violation offered to go to a chemically dependent counselor to get an assessment and to follow through with getting some help, which again goes back to the original purpose of this policy, we don't want to punish students, we want to help students. And so, if they agree to go and get some help, then we'll reduce that to 20% on the first offense, once they complete the counselor's recommendations. If a non-athlete, let's say again, a light shines singer, a NHS member, an art club member, an FCCLA member, if they are in violation, then they would be held out of activities for a period of 30 days. Just no meetings, no activities, no performances, no participation. Again, they could have that reduced in half to 15 days with the completion of the assessment and any counseling that would be recommended. On a second offense, our policy currently states that they would be denied participation for one calendar year. And that goes from the date of the violation. So, if that violation happens on April 1st, then they don't participate until the next April 1st. Same thing for the third violation. We don't think, although if it happened in seventh grade, there is a possibility you can get to a fourth violation, but that one calendar year continues. We did never wrote into our policy that someone was permanently excluded. There was a chance, again, on the suggestion of the committee, that we do a one-time self-referral. So, let's say that I am a teenage girl and I end up at a party and there are bad things happening and I can't get away, and I end up choosing to partake. I can, one time through my seventh to 12th grade year, self-refer. I can come in before my name is called and admit what I've done. And that can happen one time, and then that happens with no penalty. But once you use up that one-time referral, now you're subject to anything else that happens within the policy. One thing we uncovered while going through this, this review process is that our, we do have a policy that would be in conflict with this, or that's currently in conflict with this, that we would also like the board to consider for change. So, in our current 2430.02 athletic policy, about the fourth page in under athletic eligibility, our current policy states, if an athlete gets into trouble for smoking, using alcohol, getting arrested, getting in some major trouble, they have to sit out 40% of their season, but yet they're allowed to participate in practices, they're allowed to remain a part of the team, they're allowed to remain in street clothes and be sidelined with, with that team. If a student has a 1.8499 GPA, our current policy says you are no longer allowed to be associated with that team. You are kept away for one full quarter. So, we could have kids that have a great behavior record, they're outstanding citizens, they're, they're on the, um, they're just doing everything right. They make one mistake in their grades and we ban them for 45 days from participation. Yet, we could have students who violate our athletic code of conduct in some way, shape, or form, and are right back on the sideline and right back on the practice field the next day. We would like to see it changed so that the students could, with the permission of the coach, be allowed to practice, be allowed to be a part of the team, so that the coach can continue to keep them involved. We are losing students, not a ton, but we are losing students because once they become ineligible, they feel like they're disconnected. They don't come back. We would like to keep those kids involved and give them another chance. If we're going to do that for some of these more serious offenses, we'd love to be able to do that for students who are ineligible as well. So, that is my presentation. Teresa Seaman is here. She was a part of our committee. Brian Arnold was a part of our committee. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, in addition to the ones that we've already covered.
Are you able to test for e-vapor products?
For e-vapor?
Uh, I can check on that. I don't, I don't know if we had a e-vapor. I know it's probably a high school. I can check on that. I don't know the answer to that.
I have two quick questions. Um, one is on the self-turn-in for no penalty, does that still count as one violation? In other words, if they?
No.
Then a second violation, so it reverts to the first violation penalty?
No.
Or is the second violate, do you go? My question is, so if you do the self-turn-in, yes, that doesn't count. In other words, there's no penalty to you, but let's say then I get caught again, I test positive a second time.
You would go to the first violation.
I'd go to the first violation.
Yes. A self-referral is truly that one-time free pass.
Okay. And then, um, my other question then was then on the third violation, where we talked about it being one calendar year, you know, heaven forbid this happens, but if a, if a student tested positive for a second time, received the one calendar year suspension, in theory, they're still in the pool and could get tested again during that one calendar year.
Correct.
And if they test positive again during that calendar year suspension, does that new year start at the end of the first year, or does that start from that point forward?
That is a great question. Ryan, how would that work currently?
Currently, in the policy that we have is your calendar starts the day we decide on the suspension.
Okay.
So, if you're going, but if you go by this, where if someone does test positive by the policies we've seen, if they test positive, they go back into the pool and are basically tested the next three times.
Mm-hmm.
It's how this works now. So, if I would test positive in August, then, we're going bimonthly then, the end of August, early September, late September, I would be tested in that.
And if you test positive, then again, when does your penalty start for the second?
I would say if you test again, and from whatever point you tested positive would be the start of the calendar year.
Okay.
So, if I test positive on August 15th, the first test in August, then, and that's my second, third, fourth offense, whatever it is, is, so we're starting the calendar year, I'm ineligible at that point until August 15th of the following year. If I test positive in one of the subsequent tests during that, then that calendar year, in my mind, my suggestion would be it would start at the point they tested positive again later. That's what I would suggest.
Okay. If a student tests positive, does that then, in the, you know, when they go through the, whatever the, you know, the penalty or process would be, does that place them in a, under a heightened level of scrutiny in the future, you know, or are they just thrown back in the pool and it's a luck of the draw?
Um, in our draft policy, and let me make sure I can find it, if they test positive, they are, regardless of whether they complete all recommendations of the counselor or not, the student will be included in no more than three additional drug tests. So, as Brian was just saying, if they test positive on August 15th, they're going to get tested again in September, they're going to get tested again, probably all the way up until October. That, that doesn't matter whether or not they complete the counselor an assessment, they're automatically.
Put it to another pool with a higher level of scrutiny.
Yes.
For my clarification, could you please revisit again, um, in regards to the grade point requirement?
Yep.
You talk about our academic eligibility being a 1.85 GPA, which I believe is one of the highest in the area or in the NWOAL. What, what modifications did you want to have here?
We want to, um, under letter E, it currently states, an athlete that is ineligible is not permitted to participate in practices, contests, or other team functions. We want to eliminate the, they can't crack, or they can't participate in an OHSAA contest. That is, they're ineligible.
You want them to be able to practice.
But we want them to be able to practice and be a part of the team if the coach so chooses.
Thank you.
In your research, I assume you checked with other school districts and types of policies that they're developing. We talked about the types of drugs tested. What's the, the most common drugs being tested for?
I'd say probably marijuana and nicotine are the ones that people hit the most commonly. When I've discussed this with other people, I get at our League AD meeting, those are the ones that they said, you want to hit those every time. Those are the ones that, that seem to impact the most kids. And then from there, it seems to be pretty much whatever you feel like is an issue for your community. You need to address whatever you think's a problem for you, but marijuana, nicotine, alcohol, we did talk about alcohol, like with some of the local schools that have implemented this, but I think there was a difference with like a grain alcohol and ethanol alcohol with the duration that it stays in your system, that it can pick up on different screens. So, some districts will go with that as well. And like Mrs. Savage said, you could have a five-panel test, an eight-panel test, a 10-panel test. All of that is really up to us slash you and what the cost is going to be for each one of those.
I'm a medical person, so if you would test for amphetamines, you would have to test for specific ones, or you could do a broader screen that would catch a few of them?
I would imagine whatever falls within those different categories. And I'm not either, to answer that one specifically, but I would assume from what we've seen from the literature, you've got different categories that you can test for. And then I'm sure whatever street name for those things are fall into those different categories. And if we need to be educated on that, once we get to the point where we say, yeah, this is something we want to do, then we need to know that if we're looking specifically for these specific items, then we need to know, okay, what general category or what general screen do we need to choose? And that's where we're going to have to lean on whoever we go with, lean on them to make those calls for us.
I took the opportunity to talk with some law enforcement people because, you know, relatively naive when it comes to drugs. Uh, and they, I asked them, I said, what's the drug of choice in, in this county? And they said, we're lousy with, uh, crack and heroin. Is that the, are you guys hearing that? Is that the, are you guys hearing that?
We had one member of law enforcement on our committee, so he gave us some of the same kind of insight. And that's what we've gotten from talking to the man unit and from the sheriff's department and stuff is that heroin is cheap and readily available.
You know, historically, I always thought that was a little pricier, but he said that it's become extremely cheap.
Yeah. That's what we've heard in this research in this area, is it's become the drug of choice because of availability and how cheap it is.
Judge Steltzer mentioned that today to our juniors who are at the courthouse. It's heroin, amphetamines, those are the type of things, everything we've talked about. Those are the very common drugs that you're seeing.
Brian, I know you were really involved in the whole process of the development because of your position in that. Anything else you want to share with us in regards to what the feedback and the committee or the members of the community that served on this had to say, or their, just their overall feelings? I know that there is support here, but I guess I'd like to hear more of some of the issues or things that they, they rattled about and that they strongly supported.
Okay. And Teresa can fill in too.
Please join in too.
Meeting there too. But I think from the public sentiment was, when we basically, when we just presented the idea, "Do you think we need this?", it was a pretty resounding yes. I don't, I don't think there was anybody on the committee, and Teresa can speak up if she thinks otherwise, I don't think there was anybody on that committee from outside of the district who was kind of on the fence. I never got the feeling that anybody was on the fence. Not everybody said, "Yes, this is something we need to do." And for the people that were on the committee from the public that have kids in the system, I think they saw this, like Mrs. Savage said in the very beginning, as a great alternative for their kid. And I say that as a parent of kids that are just entering this age, teenage years and younger of, you know, rather than saying, "Well, Dad always told me not to," and how, "Well, that's going to stand up on a Saturday night in the middle of thirty of their friends. The school's telling me not to, and if I do this," and all of a sudden, the folks are at the building on Monday and my name's drawn, now basketball season's gone, or soccer season's gone, or whatever it is. We're giving kids, and this is the way the public in our committee came back to us, that we're giving kids a great answer. We're giving them a weapon when they want to say no, to be able to say no a little bit more fervently, with a little more confidence because they know they can get burned so badly by it.
In this policy, and I know Mrs. Savage spoke to the element of, you know, help for the kids, is there some threshold at which some point in time you would get law enforcement involved with a particularly repeat or fence-type situation? Or, you know, because you start digging, you're going to find out something. And the question then becomes, what do you do with it?
I think the same scenario happens right now. Before we have drug testing involved, if something came to my desk or Mr. Alspal's desk at the high school and we start to investigate because there's athletes involved and with something that we need to get involved with, we're going to have to make that decision anyway. If something seems to be where it's creating a real dangerous situation for kids, you've got minors involved and maybe real specific issues that we know about, we need and have in the past gotten law enforcement involved, whether it's to assist us or because it's going beyond us. So there may be those situations that come up. But like Mrs. Savage said, this isn't something that's designed to be punitive to kids, to create a probation situation or get them into the criminal justice system. It's a way for us to try to get them some help because if they do test positive, especially take that first offense, no self-referral, first offense, if they do test positive, we're going to give them, "Here's someone you need to call. Here's the people for you to contact. Here's the number." And they know what to do from this point on, and we're going to get them involved in it with a counseling service that's going to be able to get an assessment of them and decide, "Okay, this was a kid who made a one-time mistake, and here's what we're going to do with them." Or, "Here's a kid with a habit and something that's dangerous for him, and here's the path we want to take them down." And that gives, in my early days as athletic director, we had that onsite. We had that on hand with some of our people. We could get them into that insight program, and that was a good tool that we could use. Now we're back into that, not onsite, but we can get them into a program through a group in town, give them some counseling that they need, and then hopefully, rather than just saying, "You know, Brian, you're suspended forty percent of your season. Let's clean it up." And now we're giving them, "Suspended forty percent of your season. We'll cut it in half if you go do all these great things." And we're giving them to professionals who are trained to deal with that kind of stuff, which is a good tool for us.
I guess, you know, and I understand the student that gets involved in terms of making bad choices, but if it's being used in school, somebody's bringing it into school and somebody's selling it, somebody's pushing it. Now, I think those are two distinctly different issues. Somebody's making a bad choice and somebody that's engaging in the process of peddling narcotics or drugs or whatever they're peddling. And everybody that I've talked to law enforcement, it says, "It's happening." He said, "You think it's not, you're just fooling yourselves." So, you know.
I think, I'm just going to interrupt for a minute. I think the purposes of this policy is, as Brian said, we're not going to take every student who tests positive and turn them into probation. But those types of situations, I mean, if we're made aware or become aware of a situation where drugs are being sold on campus, that's a totally different situation. That's a totally different policy and would be dealt with accordingly.
Again, I believe the intent of the policy is to help kids.
Correct.
And I also believe, you know, there's strong community support for this throughout, not only our community, but throughout Northwest Ohio. Brian, in regards to the effectiveness of a new policy, in your conversation with other school districts, do they have any benchmarks or records to show the changes or the effectiveness of this as a deterrent? Or just, do you have any?
Yeah, I asked two districts that at our last league meeting, and they both felt like it was a little bit too early to tell. But they both said, and it was two different districts, by culture and by size, two different districts, but they both said that if they were just going to get pinned down, because I had a list of questions for everybody at the last meeting, if they're going to get pinned down to answer a question, they say, "Yes, they're much better off than where they were before." But they didn't have statistics yet that they felt comfortable with. But they just felt like having it there, and the kids, like we said, the kids having that in their back pocket as an answer for that question on a Saturday night was having an impact. And they were catching kids, quote-unquote catching kids, and the tests were coming back positive, but they thought that was going to have a positive impact in the end for deterrence and then an ability for the rest of them to say, "Yeah, okay, now I've seen what's happened to him. Now that's even more of an incentive for me to say no and to stay away from that." So they felt that way. There's only, there's a few districts in our area that have had it probably for five years or more. They may have some better statistics. The one I talked to are within, kind of in the infancy of their programs, to have some solid numbers.
If I could just real quick, as a, one, I want to say thank you to Teresa and all the committee members who voted their time and energy to be a part of Brian, all the research and background that you've done. I greatly appreciate it. As the parent of a fifth grader and a first grader, you know, my vested interest is, you know, I think this is hugely valuable. I'm constantly amazed at the exposure that my children come home and tell me about the things that the kids talk about, or they see, or they know about, whether it's through communication with other kids or television or whatever that might be. You know, and having a policy like this, I see as nothing but something to help support those children and support children who might get exposed to something that's evil and bad. So personally, I'm very supportive of us moving forward with it and greatly appreciate all the work and effort everyone's going to give us thus far. So thank you.
Good. Any other comments? Is there anybody? Well, again, this has been an interesting process because it is, even though it's more of education's responsibility to develop and implement policy, this type of a process has engaged our community, and it's great when we can get feedback in developing new policies for our school district. And even as Diana said, this is just a rough draft, still a work in progress. We hope to have a first reading in the next month. And I would encourage anyone in the community, if they do have some thoughts or suggestions or concerns, to either contact a board member, or an administrator, or Diana, or Rob, or anyone that you feel that could deliver the message up. And because we do want to hear from the community, we want to know what their thoughts are. But again, we've engaged the community in this process, and it's great to know that we have strong community support this time behind it. Anything else? Okay. I'm unaware of anything else in our new business.
Okay, so we'll go right into administrative recommendations, which is, as we talked about, the OFCC action item. On your agenda, you have the approval of the GMP, which stands for Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposal, and the GMP amendment for our OFCC building project. We had our early site package, which included our steel for the six-to-12 building, the site work, and the building foundation. That is the GMP that we went out to bid, and we looked and reviewed bids last week, and we also interviewed our top bid candidates last Friday. We're still doing a little bit of research into that, but it would be my recommendation at this time for the board to approve the GMP proposal and the GMP amendment. Right now, the bids look really good. Steel was the one that we were a little disappointed, but it'll make it through. As I said, we did a post-bid interview, and we're still doing a little bit of research. We will be coming back to the board, either at the next regular meeting, or we may have to schedule a special meeting to accept the bids for the early site package. But Rob, anything else that you'd like to add in regards to the project update?
No, just, you know, like you said, the numbers came in pretty good on the bids, and just a matter of executing now.
Okay. Are we made of a motion for that? Okay.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sendra.
Brian.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Sendra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, on the OFCC project, although we don't have a specific date yet because we're waiting until these bids are awarded, we are planning a public groundbreaking ceremony. It'll be a small ceremony, open to anyone who can attend from the community, and that will take place here on the work site. We're currently in the planning stages. We'll have a few speakers and do the ceremonial turn of dirt. And people should see dirt starting to move in April. And this early site package will wrap up by June. I know when you look outside and you see snow, that's probably not the thing we wanted to see happen today, but we're very excited. And so watch, as soon as we get a date confirmed with the construction company, we will make that announcement on our social media, through our newspaper and radio connections, and get those invitations out for that groundbreaking ceremony. Any other questions related to the OFCC project?
Tom, do you have anything? I know you've been involved in the process very intensively.
No, I think it's pretty well settled. They got, you know, I think, what I hear, I wasn't able to let in, but I understand they have coverage, so I guess the total numbers affect, they'll come in under budget, so.
We're encouraged.
This is probably the element of the project that has the most uncertainty associated with it, so it's probably, there's going to be some significant variance, I guess this is where it would be, so I don't know that anybody should be overly concerned about that.
I think everyone involved in the process as well as the community is looking for seeing some activity
Yes.
in the start of this project. So, yeah, everything is sounding like it's on track and it's positive, and at this stage of the game, under budget.
Yes.
So that's very positive. Thank you.
Under commendations for high school, we have the high school orchestra received a superior rating at the state orchestra concert, as well as the a cappella choir received a superior rating at their District One large ensemble concert. Like to recognize the women's choir and the men's choir for their excellent ratings. Our Franklin B. Walter Award student, Brianna Ponzac, our Kwanzaa Students of the Month, our February Students of Action, our Athletes of the Week, our state qualifiers in both swimming and bowling. And also would like to take a moment to, once again, just celebrate, I'm sure we'll talk about it later, but our state placers and state champion in our bowling team and state swim team. So congratulations. As well as, the Ohio Tennis Coaches Association recognized Coach Mitchell Owens for his one-hundredth career victory this past fall. Under middle school, we have Ike's Top Dogs for hardworking, our Students of the Month for hardworking. At Lincoln, our Character Trait Student Commendations for hardworking, as well as at Washington, and our PE Gold Slipminners, Daniel Bydow, Ryder Sterns, Connor Hogan, and our Character Fair Classroom Award, Mrs. Hood. So we'd like to recognize the fantastic run this past month for both our athletes and musicians and all of their awards that they've received.
Thank you. Is there a motion supporting the superintendent's commendations for the month? It's a move. Tom, seconded by?
A second.
Taken by Sendra.
Glenn.
Yes.
Emily.
Yes.
Sendra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Under personnel recommendations, we do have administrative contracts, as we talked about last month. We're in the middle of reorganizing and realigning our administrative team. Chad Bassett will, beginning on August first of 2015, assume the role of Director of Federal Grants and Operations. Karen Cox will remain an administrator at the pre-K to five level. Amy Dominic will remain administrator at the pre-K to five level, and Julie Taylor will move to special education focus at the six-to-12 level. On the addendum, we also have two contract addendums for Mr. Ford and Mr. Rary. This is a correction to their contracts that we had approved last month. Under hiring classified staff, Amanda Blank is high school lunchroom worker at four-point-five hours per day, two years' experience, effective June sixth. We have Kim Massey is changing her retirement date to June thirtieth of 2015. We have a resignation for the purpose of retirement, Roberta Hammond, grade-three intervention teacher, and that will be effective June thirtieth. We also have two resignations and one on the addendum. Cheryl Bergman, high school lunchroom worker, effective March second. Kim Massey, foreign language club advisor, co-adviser, effective May thirty-first. And on the addendum, Mr. Eric Stantz, varsity girls' basketball coach. We have approval of parenting leave for the 2015-16 school year with Joy Richmond. This is an unpaid parenting leave. And then we have approval of FMLA for some of our staff. We have one volunteer, Holly Goodrich, for the high school track team. And then, as an annual action, we will non-renew our winter supplemental staff, including all of those who come in from, are employed by anyone other than the Bryan Street Schools. Again, this is not a reflection of their performance. This is an annual action that we take after each season for our non-certificated staff members. Substitutes include classified Kathy Bieber, and those are my personnel items for this meeting.
Are there any questions for Diana in regards to the personnel commendations for the month? If not, is there a motion supporting the recommendations?
I'll make a motion to accept Diana's personnel recommendations.
Taken by Sendra. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Ryan.
Emily.
Yes.
Sendra.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Legislative Finance Update. I was in Columbus this past week to visit with Dr. Ross, who's the superintendent of ODE and superintendent panel committee. We went over some of the testing. Again, as you know, there's lots of talk about reducing some test time. We went over some of the new initiatives that are included in the current budget bill. Although, as we said last month, until the bill is finalized, there's lots of changes. Lots of changes being suggested for the funding formula, lots of changes being added and taken out of the mandates. So that is just, again, something to stay tuned. And I will continue to make trips to Columbus to stay up to date on the latest information that we have. Our board meeting dates, our next board meeting will be April twentieth at seven PM in the Fieldhouse Conference Room. Our LPVC committee is April twenty-third at eight-thirty AM, and our Business Advisory Council will meet May twelfth at seven AM. And we have our administrative reports, and we'll start with Mr. Rary.
All right, good evening. As we wind down, I guess, the end of our winter, if you can call it that. The start of spring, just an update on testing. We did complete our first round of testing at the high school. We just completed our OGT, and we're still doing a few makeups this week with our sophomores in our park, our performance-based assessments, which is the first part of the park, and the Ohio Air assessments being given this spring. We completed those in the last few weeks. We completed those in the last few weeks as well. So again, just a few simple makeups, and then we'll start our second round with the end of course exams and the air exams, again, at the end of April. A large thank you to Karen Meister, our testing coordinator at a high school level. A lot is out of her plate, and she needs to enjoy her spring break with all that she's done with our testing, so, and all those new, all of the requirements. As noted earlier, our winter sports season has finished up. We did have a state champion bowler, Mrs. Anna Hickey, so congratulations to her. Also, the state swim, girl swim team had a nice performance over in Canton to finish, finish very well. And then as we move to spring sports, scrimmages have been underway and are supposed to be continuing underway this week, and first contests are scheduled to start next week. But as always, check social media sites, school website, coaches, college school, for all those games that could be canceled due to the weather. As a finish up to our end of the quarter, and the third quarter's tomorrow, and as we go into the break between our testing sessions, our student council is trying to keep it light and fun this week, so they are doing some dress-up days, so you might see some high school students dressed in some different fashions this week. And then one date to note, coming up April 10th, is the Bryan High School Classics, so that'll be at 7 o'clock on Friday, April 10th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross? Good evening. As Mr. Rary pointed out, we are wrapping up the third quarter here tomorrow, and so that means we are three quarters of the way through the school year, and it becomes a race all the way to the end. This week is, you know, sloughs in that regards because we have our Bryan Area Foundation interviews. Those are tomorrow, and those are also on Wednesday. We are interviewing 69 seniors for a variety of scholarships, so it'll be very busy two days in that regards. And then also on top of that, starting on Thursday night at 9:30, we have two tour coaches pulling away from Bryan High School, taking our choir and orchestra students to Washington DC. We arrive in DC on Friday morning and immediately hit the ground for performance at 9:30, and it'll just roll from there. It's going to be a very busy three days. There's almost no downtime, seeing all those standard sites, but there's also, there'll be a second performance in there, and there's also a clinic that'll be attending in that specific period of time. We do all that. Sunday night, we take our little riverboat cruise, and then we board the buses at about 10 o'clock that night, drive all night, and return to Bryan on Monday, March 30th, about 8:00 AM, and get back here in time for that. And then, 17th, 18th, and 19th of April is our musical Into the Woods. Our tickets are $10 for adults, $8 for students and senior citizens, and that's Friday, a Saturday, and a Sunday, and we encourage everybody to come out. I'm hearing lots of things, students are working very hard. Just had an opportunity to see the stats last night, kind of a little giveaway right there, but it was a great opportunity, and seemed to be progressing very nicely on that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bassett?
Good evening. A couple of thank yous, and I'd like to extend, first of all, at March 12th, there are J A Day, and numerous local businesses that came in for the morning, took over our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade classrooms, and taught our kids entrepreneurship and economics, just a great day there. We just keep members in in front of our students, we always appreciate that. Also, I want to thank Bayhack for partnering with them on this Friday for our annual act out assembly for our eighth graders. They know it's a professional group that will come in and act out some contemporaries. They always beat the best ahead of times, what are you struggling with? Might do some alcohol, drug, maybe some cyberbullying, and they act out a skit in front of our eighth graders, and they stay in person and allow, in character, and allow our students to ask them questions and talk them through different scenarios. It's a really neat assembly for our eighth graders, they're able to see some of those issues that they're battling. Also, we held our missile day on March 13th. That's for our Venice Late Night Arts classes in 7th and 8th grade. The Finney City Schools came over, as well as St. Pat's. The theme this year was Sherlock Holmes. Each kid read a couple novels, and morning was activities, a writing competition, some skits that they were able to act out, or interact with, the Finney's kids. Also, our testing, first round is over, Mr. Rary alluded to. I just want to thank our tech department. We tested the middle school about 300 kids every day on computers and Chromebooks, every machine we had available, and it really was flawless. We were able to access our server, internet, and just go right on the test kit, so we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ford?
All right, I'll be talking about Washington Hamlet during this class now here tonight. If you haven't been to the Williams County Library yet, you still have five days to see the art show. It's been amazing for those of you that have seen it. Big thank you again to Jen Brandt, Audrey Enriquez, and also for Tim Horton, certainly you guys recognized on tonight for the donation of donuts to inspire our young children. If you haven't, if you haven't seen the little clay donuts they did, it's, it's quite amazing what our kids do. So again, a big thank you to them for putting all that time and energy into putting that together. But again, you have until this Friday to check it out. We do have some assemblies coming up. This Friday at Lincoln, we have the Shelter Reality Assembly. Mrs. Rhonda Samples, I had heard some great things about this group that have been coming to La Cien Elementary for the last several years. It's a drum group, and again, they're going to play some drums for everybody, and it's supposed to be pretty amazing. Their main focus is, again, is just trying to better individuals, to take action and to help those around you, so it's a good thing for our kids. At Washington, they also have an assembly on Friday with the National Child Council. They have Kerry, because Zayn, the safety man, coming, so it sounds like Kerry's going to be awesome too. So both those assemblies are taking place at Washington and Lincoln on Friday. We do have one of our fundraisers coming up here in the spring after spring break. We haven't done a fundraiser at all at Washington and Lincoln, but our PTO group has been busy planning our first ever elementary color run. And that's kind of the newest thing, if you look at fun runs or color runs, it's where they take that cornstarch color, and as kids run around the track, we'll be throwing cornstarch on it. It's not going to happen at the middle school track, so just, there's our, we're still working on the, the location of that. But that's going to be Saturday, May 16th. Children will be able to get sponsorships that way, and then that'll help pay for a lot of things that we do in regards to assemblies, extra supplies in classrooms for our students and our teachers. We did finish up our first round of park assessment. We'll have our next round coming up here in April, and then the OAA reading, which again, we talked earlier in the year about working with those children, that extra intervention they're getting to pass the OAA with a third grade reading guarantee. Lastly, I know that Mrs. Cox, when we recognize is that kindergarten screening is coming up, April 9th and 10th. Again, it's at New Hope Community Church again this year, this is the third year we've held it there. If your trial turns five by September 30th, make sure you contact Hooly Stockman or any of our offices to get an appointment set for that, but lots happening, appreciate your time.
Ryan, the assemblies Friday?
The one at Lincoln begins at, let's see, here's at 9:45 in the morning is the drum group, and the one at Washington is 1:45.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'd like to thank all the administrators for their reports. It's a, it's an exciting time of the year, it's a busy time of the year, and we applaud all your efforts to, to make the school year a lot of fun for the kids. I know that they're anxious for spring to come too, I'm sure, as much as we are. Okay, we do have need for executive session this evening. It will be under item number A, if you're finding employment, dismissal, disqualification motions, motion compensation, please. I need a motion for that. So moved by Tom, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. Please call the roll.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Okay, no action is anticipated at this time, but again, we'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening.